We shall call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everyone. We shall have roll call, please, Carol- Carolina.
Councilmember Correll?
Yes.
So me?
Yes.
Gullison?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Well, once again, we're gonna have, uh, Mayor Waller's is gonna throw out a quote for the day. How about a little humor? I think I'm already for a little humor. Uh, this one is gonna be at the expense of our elected officials and to Congress. Uh, this is by Uncle Milty. I think most of us know him as Milton Burl. Thought maybe you'd like it. You can lead a man to Congress, but you can't make him think. How about that? How clever, Milty. I like it. Alright. Um, now we'll move on to, uh, approval of tonight's agenda. I, before we get to that, we do have a, an item I would like to add. It's, uh, item I, under the consent agenda. We're looking to appoint Jim Neeland, Jim Neeland, to the airport board. He's gonna replace Vince Kehoe, Vince Kehoe. Cause he, Kehoe was asked to, uh, be done, I guess, with his commitment there, so we need to, uh, talk about that. Would there be any other additions or corrections to tonight's agenda before I ask for motion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I still move on the agenda approval with the addition of I, under consent agenda.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we have the citizens' comments portion of our meeting is up next. We have, uh, we are graced with the presence of, uh, two hard-charging members of the Morris Baseball Association. Jared, you're the president, I believe?
I'm not, Kirby.
Kirby's the president. Alright, well, this is your moment, gentlemen. If you want to approach the council, I'd ask that you come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and just, uh, state your business. This microphone right here, cause all our meetings are recorded. If you've never been to a city council meeting, it's for the benefit of the listening audience, so. Introduce yourselves and you can both come, that's fine. And just introduce yourselves and have at it.
Kirby Sales, I'm the president of the Morris Baseball Association.
And Jared Asmus, and I'm a member of the baseball association.
Alright, welcome guys. What do you got going on?
Um, so we've come up with a proposal looking to build a fieldhouse out at Eagles Park. And I believe this is brought up at the last chamber meeting. And we're looking to purchase a parcel of the land from the city of Morris to be able to build this and use it as uh, kind of like a community enrichment area where we'll have batting cages in it for uh, not only our teams to use, but also general public, um, as far as some other options as well.
So I, I'll just interject a little bit. We've, we've met with, with Rebecca and a couple other city people, city maintenance people, and had some brief discussion on this, so, um, we're really here tonight just to answer any questions that, that you guys might have because it's, it's very simple in our mind because it's something we've thought about for quite a while. Um, but if there's any questions about what we plan to do with it, how it's gonna work, um, we're very much interested in, in what is the next step. You know, how, how does, how does something like this come to fruition? Um, because neither of us have, have been through this before when we're talking about trying to build something on the city. What is right now a city property, so.
So is it inside, inside the building, is it going to be, um, all year round?
That would be the idea.
That'll be the idea, be like heated, so it could be used in the.
And that was one of the main concerns on why we came up with this is currently we can, we have baseball players who can hit in the high school during very select times. It's never just open. It's a pain in the butt to try to get a time to go in there to actually use. Uh, this would be a much more available, open option where uh, anyone from the community or surrounding community can come in to use.
Yeah, if you just envision this, uh, you know, the building right, we have right now is, is, um, sixty by a hundred. It's gonna be completely wide open space, all turfed with three batting cages strung across, uh, seventy feet. So then there'll be thirty feet of room for possibly other activities, um, down the road, but, but even right, like, like right now, our, our, our junior high program has to, has to rent space or, or go to a different facility. They go to the hockey arena for baseball. Our seventh and eighth graders literally don't hit until they get outside. Well, this would be another avenue where, where we have, we have space to do that. We're not competing with the high school, with other teams and other programs and, uh, things like that. Not to mention the great benefit we'll have off-season, you know, winter, um, winter type activity, so.
So this facility then, of course, will be heated. You looking at natural gas or how you take the heat, you're thinking?
Yeah, we, to, to be honest, we, we haven't even gone to tho- those lengths, but we, we will want it heated and cooled.
Okay.
Um, because we do envision using it in the summer also. Different tournaments where batting cages, um, there's a, a bunch of teams at the facility. We got, we got more space. Yeah. I, I, I guess to answer that question, it would be, what do we think is more cost-effective? You know, natural gas versus, you know, LP, yeah.
In-floor heat, I would assume.
In my very little expertise in that, I, I would say we probably will not do that just because of the cost. The, you know, it's, the initial cost is a lot more, um, for budget-wise, but.
So are you running plumbing there? So there's water, bathrooms?
Well, originally, we had, we had thought about doing that. But then, talking with a few city people about where we would have to get city water and sewer from, financially, I'm not sure it makes sense. And then we also started thinking about, you know, do we, do we want to have a bathroom in there? Do we want kids hanging around for a couple, two, three hours where they would have to use the bathroom? It, it's something at this point in time, we're not anticipating doing, but when we build the building, we will plummet for the expansion of that, if, if we feel like we want it. But right now, the way that we have our plans, we're not, we're not planning on, on hooking into city and, city sewer and water just because, just because of the expense.
You know, I'm just trying to envision how that's gonna work. You know, you can picture a group of kids and you're in there in the middle of the winter and somebody asks you to use the bathroom. Then what? You know, it's gonna be, I know it sounds, I agree, that the, the initial upfront costs are probably gonna be high, but you know, I think I would ask you to just maybe look more long-term when you invest this kinda money because, um, it's, I don't know. Make you, well, make sure you do it right, I guess is kinda what I'm, I'm saying, and I think, I don't know what the rest of the council feels, but I think it's a great idea.
So when, when Kirby and I in the baseball association first started talking about this, Granite Falls put one of these up, right next to their field. And that was kind of our first experience. You know, we had a Junior Legion State Tournament. We used it. We got to see the excitement about it. I, I know a couple people from Granite Falls, I, I kinda know how they did it and how they funded for X, Y, and Z, but they did not do the plumbing either. And, and that's a discussion I had with them too about, well, do you, do you wish you would have? And they, they really don't. Now, their building is plumbed and, and built to be able to, just to hook in and do it if they choose to. But right now, and it's been running for three years, three or four years, and they, and they haven't done it now. But I get it, like, right? We, we don't want kids opening the door and going to the bathroom in the winter either. We've talked about maybe if, if that becomes an issue, do you, you find a space to even put a, a winter on his porta potty out there? We are definitely not opposed to, to, to doing this, to, to plumbing it for city water and sewer. It's just, I, I suppose it would go to, okay, let's get a bit, what would that cost? I don't know besides just casual conversation.
What's the revenue sources that you're looking at here, guys? I mean, obviously, the thing has about, what, three hundred thousand dollar price tag or so?
Yeah.
And I guess maybe you wanna speak to that for a little bit.
So the upfront cost, we're looking at, uh, private donations. We have some people we've reached out to and kind of have talked with, and we believe we can reach that initial upfront cost to build the facility. Uh, so then it became a discussion of how do we continue to maintain this facility, uh, as the years go on. So one thing we're looking at is, uh, opening up baseball association membership. Uh, as you join the baseball association, you become a member, uh, you would get access to the facility. And then there would also be the option, if you're not a member, you could, uh, reach out onto our website and, you know, sign up for a time, for a fee as well, to use it if you are not a member of the baseball association.
What are our dues these days? I, I, I know I was a member over the years of nothing.
We currently have nothing, it's, it's just open.
Okay.
This, this building would be a, like an anytime fitness model. It would be a schedule online, um, keyless entry type of thing, so that kids, kids can use. It wouldn't be open only when it's staffed per se. Yeah, if kids wanna come in and, and schedule a time at, at, at ten o'clock at night, they can come in and hit at ten o'clock at night.
You said that Granite Falls had one, what is their building in proximity to their playing field? I mean, how is it? I mean, I see the, the plans about where you wanna put it in the proximity of, you know, obviously, there's not a lot of spots in our spot, but where do they have theirs?
Theirs is behind their first base dugout, probably twenty feet from the playing field.
If you can vis- envision our field, it'd be like where the, the shelter is.
Where the concession stand is, that kinda stuff there?
Yeah, it'd be like down the first baseline of the concession stand.
Where that, where that picture shelter is.
Yeah, yep, yep.
So that's, that's right there?
Yeah, it's right there, yeah.
Okay, well, I was just, I was curious, cause see, you know, if somebody else had kinda plopped it.
Yeah. And that's been one of our main points, is we want the, the accessibility of it to be right there. And when we first met, got together with the city, we got into discussions about snow removal and, you know, be, being able to get in this thing in the middle of January, and that's one of the reasons, actually, it was, it was the city's kind of ideal. How about, how about this? How about coming back here on Imperial Drive and, um, something we had never really thought before, but I think, I think it'd be a great location.
And that's where it's, where it's proposed, or I see it was behind the left field fence.
So what our current thought is, is that we would take out a part of that fence, and this would become that fence, which would have a couple purposes. One, it gives us right onto the fence to start building. And then two, we now have the college playing out there. From what we've heard from the college, is one of their biggest issues with playing on Chiswick Field is a three hundred left field fence for college athletes is a little short, so this would act as a double wall for them as well.
The green monster.
Almost like a green monster type of, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Um, the other reason for there that we like that idea is, it's out of the way. Currently, that piece isn't being used. We don't like people coming back in there to park and then trying to walk through. There's no walking paths back there. There's nothing that is currently being used, or that I would perceive being used as far as a city park goes. It's, it's kinda out of the way, and it's not aesthetically wanting to take away anything.
Have you guys thought about it all? Like, obviously, there's a stanchion in left field, right? What that looks like for lighting and some of that stuff? Where to hook up for electrical, some of that?
Yeah, so, um, there is electricity out there with the light poles, so I, I don't think, um, the electrician, electricity is an issue. But the other thing, if, if you play baseball at Chiswick ever, there's a, about an hour window where it's almost impossible to hit. Well, this, i- if we put up a, a building that has a high wall to have this green monster type effect, now maybe that will also, um, become like a hitter's eye. It'll get the sun down a little bit quicker. Maybe that's a benefit too, that, the way that our field, you know, sits. But we, we haven't, to, to be completely transparent, we ha- we haven't, we haven't done, we haven't met with an electrician. We, I mean, we're in the infancy stages of this thing, like, can this even be a reality with property lines and, and, you know, um, that sort of thing, so, um, we all know in the world of construction that once you get the green light, I think anything is possible, but, um, putting one step in front of, in front of the others is what we're trying to, we're trying to do.
I kinda look at, you're, you're asking the city to pretty much donate the land for this building, which, and to not, you know, in the building that's thought out, and it's a great idea, but I'm looking as like, okay, is it really gonna be feasible not to have bathrooms in there? Now Granite Falls can say, no, we think it was great, but, I mean, you have people in there, if you wanna, if you're looking at a source of revenue as somebody renting it, well, if I'm gonna go rent it for three hours, I'd like for a group to play in the batting cages or a birthday party, or something like that. I'm gonna wanna have access to water and bathrooms, so, and I get, you know, these are all early infancy stages and just trying to come up in the money piece of it, but I also think, like, you're, you're asking us to go ahead and pretty much donate the land for this. And I look at it as like, okay, I need to know more on what's gonna be there, which means you guys need to more, know more about the lighting, the, the, how much it's gonna cost, the revenue, while we might sell more, um, we might raise our dues for the baseball association. It's all still kinda in my mind, just really unknown. I mean, I, I'm not saying that it's a great idea for the baseball association. Is it a great idea for the city as a whole? I, I don't know.
Well, kind of our.
Yeah, if it was your own land and you'd, great, go for it.
Yeah, yeah. And our, our thought process on the, you know, basically asking for a donation of, of the land was, you know, we don't wanna put up a building on a piece of ground that we don't own. The city doesn't wanna have a building put up on a piece of land that they own in case, what if the baseball association five years just says, well, we're walking away? Um, so we really thought that that was the only avenue. We wanna create a partnership with the city like we've, like, we've always had with, with baseball and the city. And, and we feel like, um, we, we truly feel like there will be some benefit to the city of Morris with, with out-of-town kids, out-of-town teams, out-of-town training. They're gonna, they're gonna drop their kids off, they're gonna, I mean, right, it's, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna use our stores, use our, um, you know, use some of the things in Morris that they otherwise wouldn't be here for. Having, continuing to upgrade facilities at the, at the park will continue to make our tournament stronger, which brings in, you know, teams throughout the summer. Um, I, I think we all know the added benefit there, but, 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 but you're right. I mean, um, in, in, in the greatest plan that there is, I think this building has a bathroom. And, you know, maybe, maybe we need to take the next step and, and say, okay, we have an estimate, uh, three hundred thousand dollars to put this building up that doesn't include a bathroom. What, what would that take? And see what that number is. Right now, all we have is a rough number. You know, I was told roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
For a bathroom?
To get to the city water and sewer from that location.
Based off of what, uh, Russ has told us, they just did something where they had to run a line.
They just did another project about the same distance. And that, so that's, that's, that's where that number came from, and it's just like,
Yeah.
That's a, that's a tough number to swallow, you know, when you're.
Well, just so you know, kinda, we had some discussion about this as a council, but, you know, there's a slippery slope we're kinda walking on here because if we sell, you know, land to a, a club, you know, in one case, we have several parks, of course, scattered all over the, the city, you know, then we're kinda setting a precedence. You know, what's, what's gonna happen the next time a club or some organization wants to buy a chunk of land from our park? So, you know, there's, there's a little bit more behind the decision to sell that land initially, so that we're, we're all kinda struggling with that a bit too, so, you know, it's, but you're, you're right, and I applaud you for bringing this forward because you gotta start somewhere, but these are good conversations to have.
Yep. Do we know where the property line is there between us and the armory?
If you go to the county senate, or.
I'm on the, I'm on the stuff you, we had at our fair informational meeting, was there a lot, a drawing there? Would it come, would it call that?
There was some concern, like, is it even feasible to build there because of the property line?
There is, I, I've, I've had it surveyed, to be honest. Um, I had a, I had a surveyor go out and, and pound stakes. And I, I think we'll, we would certainly be within that, I think, is it ten feet?
Well, from the, since it's in front of the building, it has to be about twenty-five.
There's enough physical room, now the whole building code, and, um, I'm missing the word that you need the.
The setbacks. I don't think, I don't think the setbacks would be in compliance. I think they'd have to get a variance for the building.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd have to get a variance, but there is enough room to put, to put the building on.
The armory would have to stamp off on that variance, and to.
Uh, well, there would be a public hearing both at the planning commission and here.
A number, a number of years ago, I actually reached out to the, the facility director at the National Guard, who used to be, I, I forget his title, but he used to be the main guy in Morris. He was, he was, he was the chief when that crew went over to Iraq, and he has been absolutely on board and totally supportive. I'm not saying that he would s- sign off and just say, yeah, go ahead and do what you wanna do, but I'm just saying he's been, he's been a treat to visit with and, and, uh, and talk to. He's, he's got ties to Morris and, and was very interested in something like this, but.
Yeah, anytime you're dealing with a government entity, it's, it's a little dicey.
Yeah.
Down, down the third baseline in the outfield there, is that a batting cage, or just an outside batting cage?
Yes, yeah. There's three lanes right there, yeah. And we talked about the little, you know, triangle lot that, that, the game zone right out of the street and, and, well, of course, of course, they own it number one, but then we started talking about snow removal with the city on, on that street. Then we talking about, okay, we're gonna put up a hundred-foot building, and all of the people that live in the townhomes were obstructing their view and, and that's kinda how this morphed into this location.
Well, I mean, I, 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 you know, if you were to put it in that property, I wouldn't be concerned about the townhomes because if somebody would sell that property and the guy would build a house that they can see the, you know, if they sell the property to anybody, somebody's gonna build there.
Yeah.
You know, so it, it's gonna be irrelevant to what structure it is or whatever. You're gonna lose, you're gonna lose vision to the ballparks if that corner is sold to somebody.
If you sucked it right though, up as close as you could to Bill's place, farther to the west, you know, right where his tree line is there, you, you wanna go sixty wide, right?
Yeah.
By a hundred?
Yeah.
You know, then you'd have your entrance off of Seventh Street, then you could actually tie into our water line right there also. So you'd have to tuck him into selling you a chunk of land, obviously. To me, that makes a lot more sense to put it there is if you could just get it as far up against Bill's property as you can, and then you'd have a decent access, you'd have parking, and all that good stuff. And then water would be more doable, I think, if, in that spot.
In, in Granite Falls where they did theirs, is that their field and everything, is that a city field?
Yes.
Okay, and so that building is on city property?
That building is on city property, and from what I believe is city-owned, but the baseball association manages all of it, which is kinda like a lot of what we do with our parks currently.
Sure.
As far as, you know, we do a lot of the upkeep and taking care of them and adding and those things, but it's still city-owned. Um, when discussing this, one of our concerns both, on both sides was, like Jared had said, if one side decides, we don't want it to be that anymore. City decide, hey, it'd be a great place to store lawn mowers or something like that.
Well, wouldn't you think that they have a, a contract with the city? Obviously, if the building went up there, the baseball association or, or they probably have a certain contract written in, into it. I think that's probably one of the points about the ownership of the property, you know, it's a, it's a city park. And you get into the ownership part about selling off part of your parks, where if that property is still owned, but, and I guess the question would come into play whether the building was owned by the association or by the city, vice versa, either or. The contract could be to lease the property for a period of sixty years, or, or whatever it gets down to be. You know, an ironclad contract for, you know, the, the, the baseball association have to be the one to opt out of it versus the city. This, and so the city therefore would not be selling,
Right.
you know, property, but yet leasing property for a, a, you know, longevity in an ironclad contract that, you know, you just can't get out of. So, I mean, I think that's, that kinda soothes some of my feelings about the ownership of the property. I, I think having something for the kids to do that stuff in and, and that you're able to do that for your association is great. I think it's just a question of, you know, where and, and, and how we kinda format it. I'd like to hear more about it and talk more about it for sure.
Has been anybody approached Bill about maybe selling a chunk of ground there?
A couple years ago, one of our board members who has, I think, a little relation with him, Brian Dees, I, I think, I think had, went over there, and I don't think anything was ever discussed, like, you know, money, or how much, or what would it take, or ju- just the casual, hey, and I know he's, it, I think he's a lot more open to it maybe now than what he used to be, cause it used to be a really short conversation.
I want a, I want a donation with his name on the building.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think that, that.
Name on the building?
Yeah, that.
There you go.
Going that route is out of the, you know, i- i- it's out of the question, it's just.
To me, that would be a cleaner route to go, cause then you own the property. We're not, we're not in a position where we gotta try to figure out if we're gonna sell city park land to, you know, a club. That's gonna get sticky. I know you may not think it's a, kind of.
No, I, I, I completely understand.
It's gonna get, it's gonna open a can of worms, I'm afraid, but.
You know, Rebecca, with our snow removal conversations a long time ago, is that, I don't remember those conversations exactly. That was a big concern.
It, yep, so, um, Seventh Street, um, blows in quite a bit. So that was, I think, a concern on, okay, is there an issue with that? And then you can't park in the parking lot, cause that's where we dump snow in the winter. So our current parking lot, they couldn't, the park parking lot, they couldn't use as their parking lot, cause. If we still come down Imperial Avenue, if it were placed in the.
Well, I mean, you dump enough snow in there, or you block it all off?
And it blows in. It blows pretty bad.
Yeah, it blows up there?
Yeah.
It blows, that, that area.
Well, I mean, you're, you can, you can get entry from the backside of, uh,
Right.
the south side of the, um, armory.
Well, that's where you would be coming in.
That's where you'd be coming in anyway.
Anyway, so, yeah.
With this current proposal.
Yeah.
The current proposal, yeah, but if you, if you.
If you go here.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
You'd have to buy enough land to allow for parking.
To, to, to build another parking lot is what, yeah.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
And you got your parking right there with the building.
Right, yeah.
You've hit on it a couple of times, right? Obviously, infancy stages. Have you looked at all into construction timeline?
No, no, because.
We didn't wanna get too far down the road.
Yeah, completely understandable.
We came here and didn't know something that was gonna be a definite note, then it's like, we're not gonna.
Yeah. Completely understandable, right? With, with the proposal that you have, the only reason I bring it up is you're using it from March to last week or the week before, between different state activities and whatever, right? And if it takes the majority of your season, what does that look like for Junior Legion, Legion, Bay Bruth, Town Team, Senior League? Are we just going to different facilities? Right, that top process.
Yeah, I mean, the, the dream is to have this thing up and running by winter, right? But, I mean. But, I mean, it's September next week and, you know, but it's gotta, this, this conversation needs to start somewhere.
Yeah.
Um, once we get a go-ahead and, and the location plans, I, I don't think it would, I don't think it would take long to develop a construction plan with the right people to, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward building, it's
Who's doing your design work for you?
Um, the, the current bid that I got was Odyssey Steel out of Brandon.
Okay.
And the only reason I went there is because I've used that guy on some other farm projects. So, I knew it was just a way to get a, a pretty decent bid, yeah.
I think a good next step would be to have a conversation with Bill, maybe give you a Plan A and a Plan B, you know, as far as location goes. See if he's willing to sell you a chunk of land and, at least if he isn't, you'll know one way or another. You know, then we'll know what, what we have to deal with here. You know, that's, if he is willing, then that gives you another option.
I see one of the questions we have here, I, I noticed is there, um, is brought up by the staff that the power out there, they felt is at its max capacity.
Yeah.
Does that mean then, what does that mean? Yeah, you're, you're, electrically challenged, I know.
I have no idea.
But, I mean, is that
I mean, I guess they, that they'd have to have more power run to the park. Because like, you couldn't probably hook on to anything there.
Couldn't have lights on the field and lights in the field helps at the same time.
Okay. But, I mean, that's, I don't know where all that comes from, but I don't think that's that hard.
All right, guys, I think we've got, unless the council has anything else, I mean, we have quite a bit to think about here and I think, you know, you guys have a little bit of work to do at your end, so.
Look, um, are you, like, where are you proposing the location now? Do you, do you guys like feel that's the best, are you willing to look at different places to put it? I mean, I, I think that it's a great project, I think it's something that, I think you guys are on the right track. This is great that your associates can do that, I think it's just finding, finding a place that we all can agree that it's the best, I mean, so that we're, you know, we don't, we're not building it over power lines or I don't know if we have to move any utilities if it's over
We would have utilities under there, so
And utilities meaning just basically power?
You know, I'm not quite certain exactly, I know they talked about a storm, storm sewer is there, so I would, I don't know what other ones.
That all has to be moved if there's a building on there?
Well, I would, don't think it would be beneficial to have it over top.
Yeah, on, on that current location, there's a storm sewer that we would, that is, I don't get my directions right. It, 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 we wouldn't build over the current storm sewer that's there. Now, this is when I was just out there with Russ and Ryan Mulgar. Um, but what else is under there, obviously we haven't, you know, but that big storm sewer that's, that's sitting there, the building would be to the, to the north of that. Um, so they didn't think that anything would need to be done there.
Isn't there a power service up there in the, next to that parking lot of the armory? It seems to me, I was a member of the guards there, obviously for years, and it seems to me I remember seeing some sort of a power utility location, kind of right outside the fence area, but maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
I don't think there is back there on city, now there might be like where those apartment complexes kind of congregate there in that corner, but I don't think there is on, on the city ground, but I, I don't know.
I can't remember.
Yeah.
Um, as far as that location, Brian, um, we've talked about numerous different locations, whether it's behind center field or, or where you can get it up closer to, uh, that Bay Ruth field up top, or we worked on something with the school and it's just when this one kind of, it fits nicely because it's tucked away, it's out of the way, but it's still at the field. Um, I don't know that we would be opposed to working with the city through a contract or lease or something like that. It was more of a, just a, who's responsible for what.
Right.
But we like that location strictly because it's, it's out of the way and yet it's still very accessible to the field. So, if we're using it during these year tournaments in the summer, there's all of our options in one general area.
Exactly.
Right.
I hear you.
Makes sense.
All right. Well, that's good, I, that's, I mean, we, we'd heard and seen some of the plans about it, which I have on my pad here. And, uh, I, you know, just getting some information from you guys, what you were thinking and actually what it was gonna be used for was, is useful to, to know that and, uh, I think we just gotta answer, answer some questions and figure out a few things about it, but I, I kind of, I like it, so. Thanks, I appreciate you guys for coming and explaining it, so.
You know, if we, just real quick, if, if, if we decide to, to do water and sewer, which I think is the, the best plan there is, what is the process to get a good number, like, who do we talk, talk to? Hey, how do we get city water and sewer to this location? How do we get city water to this location? What would the cost be?
Yeah, I've talked to Jeff, right? I believe, um,
Jeff.
Jeff, good, Jeff would be able to help us with that.
You, you could get, you talked to Rebecca, Rebecca would
Joe Riley does that kind of stuff too, like, he just put in some stuff for Superior, so he would, he would know cost too.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, I'd say them, Ryan, Russ, I think they all kind of are pretty well aware of what kind of costs are usually associated with. But if you want like a hard cost, I'd probably say Joe Riley would
And Joe would know where the end of the current line is?
We could show him where it is.
Okay, okay, so probably between Joe and Russ and Russ, okay. Okay.
Perfect.
All right, next step.
We appreciate your time.
Well, appreciate you guys doing this, it's great for your baseball association.
Do you just wanna communicate with, with Becca on our, what our next step is or will you guys get, give, give a few things answered and
Sure.
we'll, uh, go from there.
What does Becca say?
I was just wondering what, so is this a, yes, we wanna look more into what the costs are? Kind of what the contract that Granite Falls has with the association like this? Because this, I mean, if, if you're saying yes, move forward, I mean, there's a lot more
Right.
process for that location, because the planning commission, I mean
I, I think what I'll do is I, I will go knock on, on game's door. Because if they say no, well, then, then, then that option is just, it's, it's null and void, we, we don't have that option.
Right.
Then we're back to city
Deal with this, okay.
city ground, right?
Fair enough.
Then we can talk about, and I, we're not, we don't necessarily, like in our first, we don't necessarily wanna own the land either. We just thought that that's probably our best avenue to get this thing done, is if we, if we do own the land, so if there's a, i- if we can write up a contract, which I think we can, I just, so that we're all comfortable with, then maybe that's
So, I mean, even with that, I mean, we did have a staff meeting today, it was brought up, there's utility line, so I don't know, you know, that before we even, I guess, start that talk, we need to put, put on lines where they are.
It just may be cost prohibitive to put it there.
Right.
I mean, and I'm, I appreciate the reference to the ballpark with the big green, because that's a way bigger visual than I can see. And it's like, okay, that wouldn't look correct, because at first you think of this big giant shed, you know, what the heck's that gonna look like? So, giving us a reference point, I pulled it up, so I can see it, and it's like, okay, that, that's
It's Vanway.
Um, yeah, so, but I, so those things, and you've answered some questions, there's still, obviously, and you've said that, lots of, lots of planning to do, but from our end, it's the cost of it. Um, like, what is it gonna cost to, either, you know, either for you or for us, or for anybody doing this? I mean,
Yeah.
you know, you've got the cost of the building, which is one thing, but then you have all those other costs maintaining it, the moving lines, moving whatever you're doing, you know, snow removal, um, heating and cooling, something that size too.
Yeah.
Um, the other issue, like we've talked about, you know, does the city wanna be in the business of selling park property? You know, that's, it can, it can open up a big can of worms, so it's, it's not an easy ask, what you're, what we're talking about here, but
We look at it before you even build, I guess, I would, I would say we look at what, what would the lease look like? Because that would, you know, we're gonna have some costs into insurance and, you know, different things, so that, you know,
And again, then we're looking at a club incurring costs for a club event. And I, you know, maybe we just look to the hockey association and the ice arena, it's the same concept, but that's with the county instead of the city. And I don't know, I, it's been built so long ago, I don't remember what the, how they came about with that, but, yeah.
It's worth looking into for how they did it, the
Granite.
Granite.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Then we're not, then everybody's kind of going, when eyes open and that going, hey, this'd be great.
Right.
Start it and then go, oh, wow. Yeah, now what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
We'll be in touch.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
All right. Um, moving on, anybody else, uh, would like to address the council, now would be a good time, I see a couple of brave souls in the audience, so now would be your time. Seeing no one, we shall move on, we have no public hearings. Uh, we shall move on to reading and approval of our minutes from August fourteenth. We'll, uh, talk about the regular meeting minutes first.
I will move approval of the regular meeting minutes for the August fourteenth council meeting.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we have the condensed version of the minutes for the paper from that same date, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I will move approval of the condensed version of the minutes from eight fourteen twenty-four.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve the condensed version of those minutes from eight fourteen twenty twenty-four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we have the, next up is our consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, pay estimate number four for North Sun Construction LLC, pay estimate Elrose Electric, Inc. And then we have a couple of months worth of tree board minutes, one from June twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and from July tenth, twenty twenty-four, and then are the library board minutes. And then we have some gambling reports. We have an application for off sale for three point two malt liquor, uh, beverage license for the assumption church, that's item G. And then, uh, like, item, item H is a raffle license report. And then the added appointment of Jim Nealan to the airport board. And I will move, uh, approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. I will bring it back to the council for any discussions of any items on the consent agenda. While you're thinking and pondering, I see, uh, reading through the library board minutes, uh, there was some discussion about the, a grant, a USD, USDA grant, and the amount that would cover about fifty-five percent of the bathroom renovation project, leaving around roughly eighty thousand.
That is, that is what I was told too. Um, we, we did have a discussion, Anne and I had a discussion, um, when we kind of went over her budget asks um, about this, and I said, um, well, what's the timeline, what's, what, what are they looking at? Because we don't have those dollars put into the, to the budget, so we would need to know prior to, to doing this. Um, they haven't applied for it yet.
No.
Um, from what I understand, um, so I told her that if they do, they would need to have, um, basically consent from the council to, to do a local match. And so we'd have to get it in the budget and have those conversations. So, um, nothing
Okay.
As I am aware, nothing, um, has moved forward, she hasn't given me the timeline, um, on what they're thinking. Um, when the grant opens, when it closes, what the plans are, so, um, but nothing is in the budget for it for next year.
Stay tuned to see if they get the grant, right?
I would assume if it's like any other USDA grants, that they would have to come and get approval from council to do the local share. So, we should hear about it prior to them even applying, um.
We'd have, we'd have to be, we'd have to be willing to approve our local share before they would grant the
That's how most USDA grants are, but is that you would have to do a resolution stating that you were in favor of doing it, would give up that capital.
Yeah, you can't get ahead of your skis on something like that.
Yeah.
All right.
Line forty-five, I have no questions on line forty-five, but it made me think, um, I've seen the second half of that line, Green River Backstop, I've seen that under construction for a couple of weeks, do we have a timeline on that?
I think he said he was done with it.
I think it's done now.
Is it?
Yeah.
The, the, yeah, the, the backstop is up.
Okay.
Yeah.
The concrete is poured.
Okay.
Just, oh, there's gonna be some benches that are
Hmm.
down, I like it, it looks really nice. What, people are really using those pickleball courts too, and that basketball court and that, that really nobody hardly was ever on that old tennis court we had there, and now there's always somebody there. That's really great, I think that was really a great thing that we did there.
Yeah, it turned out really good.
It did.
All right, any other further discussion on any of the other items? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve the items on the consent agenda. I'll just ask for a voice vote on that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we will move on to petitions, requests, and communications. We have a change order number four for the Morris Transit Garage. So, they're asking, it looks like some additional dollerinis, Becca, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, can I see that, because I don't think it's in the packet.
Um, so, we kind of talked about this at the last meeting, um, so with, when we did our first walkthrough, um, we had that change order that took away from the contract, um, and so our mind dot, uh, Brian, um, he said that we could then include the furniture that we, um, had to take out initially, because we were over, um, with what the grant was allowing for, so this is just some of those, um, extra appliances that, um
Okay, about ten grand or so we're talking about?
Yep.
And this still keeps us under the
Under the contract, yep.
Great.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other further questions on that change order?
Are we now approving, you need a motion to approve this change order?
Yes.
Completely, okay. I'll move approval of change order number four for the Morris Transit Garage.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve change order number four for the Morris, uh, Transit Garage has listed. Once again, I'll ask for a voice vote on that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we will move on to ordinances and resolutions. Tonight we have the first reading of ordinance number one twenty-six and ordinance amending the city of Morris zoning map. And I don't know, again, once again, you wanna give us a little background, Becca?
Yeah, so the planning commission met, um, a few months ago, talked about, they had a request to change, um, the parcel um, that has that horse, um, what would you wanna call it, like a therapy center? Um, to change their designation on the zoning to, um, farm residence. So, in order to have the farm animals there, um, with, in in talking with, um, at the planning commission, they've decided, there's three of them, I can grab the map. Uh, there's three different parcels in that little area, um, next to it is the farm residence zone. Um, so, one is right now used for egg land, and then two have houses on them, so it fits kind of what's already there. Um, so they have, um, yeah, so they had their public hearing approved moving forward to, to council, uh, the ordinance to rezone these three parcels from heavy industrial to farm residence. So, we would need to have the first reading and then set a public hearing, um, for um, I think she has it September Um, I think she has it September twenty fourth.
Yeah, you don't have a map, so.
They can show you up.
It's right before you get to the.
So I can.
It's right at the bypass across from the church.
Yeah, or when you get to the overpass, before you go to the overpass on the right side.
Right side.
Yep.
I was trying to find my ring too, I'm like, oh, now I found it, I was like over and missed that.
No, it's before the underpass on nine, so.
Oh, that's where that, that deep area there, Jerry, as you say, is right?
Yeah.
Down there, okay.
Yep.
Well, it makes sense, there's already houses there and it's farmland, so it's not gonna be indu- heavy industrial ever.
At the last meeting, or at the planning commission's public hearing, um, Pete Hitchens was there and said that they have a problem with rezoning their area to.
Alright, thank you, helps to, now I got a visual stuck in my, in my head.
The one thing that did come up in the planning commission was they were concerned about spot zoning, right, if that was the only one in the area, but it does back up to other RF areas, so they were okay with that. And you do have the highway that connects the other heavy industrial sites as well.
Is there something driving this?
The horses. So.
They can't have horses in heavy industrial.
They can't have horses there, no, but not in heavy industrial, so um, they need to rezone, and then the next step will be to um. Get a conditional use permit for a commercial recreation in that area, in just their, their parcel, not the rest of them, but.
They're gonna have horses there.
They already do, so.
It's a therapy.
Yeah.
For therapy is why they have horses.
Gotcha. Alright, makes sense. We have to have a motion to approve that first reading, right, cause they're introduced and adopted.
Yep, and then uh pub- pub- public hearing for September twenty fourth.
Yep, yeah, cause their, ordinances are introduced and adopted, so they'll be adopted at the public hearing then, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright, so we'll be looking for a motion to uh approve the first reading. Of ordinance number one twenty six.
I'll move on that motion, amending the city of Morris zoning map, and do we set the public hearing?
Yep, first and setting a.
To September twenty fourth. Public hearing for September twenty fourth.
And I will second.
Alright, thank you, we have a motion and a second. Uh, to uh approve the first reading of ordinance number one twenty six, in ordinance amending the city of Morris zoning map. And once again, I'll just ask for a voice vote on that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Alright, we shall move on to the city manager's newsletter.
Yeah, okay, so we'll start with the tree board, so the tree board talked um this last week about the fall planting, so um Russ and members are looking at different locations. Um, they've settled on certain tree types, and will be ordering um fairly soon on, on that fall planting. Um, another thing discussed was utilizing some of our funds that we have for trees um to be given out to homeowners to put on their property instead of on public property. Um, so the tree board had a subcommittee look into how like Hutchinson does their energy tree program, we'd kinda like to try and mirror that, so. Um, we're trying to put together more information on how the program will work, and then we'll kinda bring it forward. Um, thoughts are to um get a number of trees, let the public know, these are the trees we have, kind of a first come, first served when they come. Uh, location is kind of dependent right now on where we'd have them come and get the trees, um, we would have, we could have tree stewards. If they wanted to have them come and help pick out a spot in their yard on, where it would be the best, um. Kinda give them information on care and, and different things, so um, still planning stages on that one, but um. Gonna try and get that going since we have those other grant dollars for public trees, um, figure we'd use some of our funds um to help. With recent storms, a lot of people have lost trees, so this can help them get on their property too.
Well, and, and trees do have a life expectancy, and these, I mean, we have huge ones in our yard that are just not looking very good, so um, you need to plant to grow.
Well, and the cost to take them down.
Free trees in his yard.
I wonder if there's something that maybe the, maybe a suggestion for the tree board or something too, uh, what I see a lot is, is there any help they can have to. Citizens within the city to help them trim their trees, cut them back a little bit, I mean, you know, sometimes, some people don't have access to. Uh, you know, the equipment to haul the trees away, or the equipment to, you know, get up in the tree, or saws, or, you know, cause sometimes I see that sometimes it's getting overrun. You know, and when you get that, you kinda, I think you lose the beauty of the trees in your yard when it's just, it gets so overrun. I'm just kinda curious if there's some sort of program that we can start that would help people that would need that kind of a service.
We have a couple of tree services.
I mean, we can, we keep planning, but if we don't, you know, get them to look good and, and take out what we do need to do, or overgrown and stuff. And, and a lot of people just don't have the ability to have that happen, or where do you take them? I don't wanna take them down to the dump, now I gotta pay, you know, fifty bucks and get rid of them, uh, just leave it, you know, I just was curious if something that would help a little bit. Just a suggestion.
We can see if other cities have programs like that, I honestly, the first thing that comes to mind is liability. Going into somebody else's, I mean, even when we go and have, have to mow grass for people, we hire it out, cause we don't want that liability of going onto someone's property and doing things, but. Um, it's something we can look at, see if other people have a program.
Leave it to the professionals, you know, we do have a couple of guys out there trying to make a living cutting trees and pruning trees, so they're the experts.
True, but I mean, just saying that sometimes people don't have access to that.
Right.
Or the ability to pay that.
Well, if they can't afford it, that's one issue, but.
That's, that's kind of where I was.
Yep, I get it.
Um, yeah, so as we get more information, we will, we will share with you guys, um, discussion came up, um, that the trees. Um, don't wreck sidewalks, you, you all have some paperwork in front of you that um Zach and I were given, um, so you can take a look at that. Um, this then led to conversations on talking about, do we want to put trees back in the grates on the sidewalks? Um, so Russ and I have talked um probably for the last month or so, kind of about, you know. What do we do with, with these spots, um, and, and where do we go from here with the empty ones, so there's about fifteen empty grates. That no longer have trees in them, and then kind of, we kinda have to decide, you know, do the, do the benefits outweigh the negatives? So um on here, you kinda see, you know, the pros of, of having trees on, on the sidewalks, um, they beautify the, the downtown district. Um, it helps energy costs for the businesses, um, you do have some cons in there too, though, uh, they push up on the grates, so they rub against buildings. Um, a lot of the trees are growing into the grates, small trees are getting broken by people, especially outside of bars and restaurants. Um, we've had, had business owners requesting to have them taken down, um, a lot of those mainly with the restaurants, so the.
Is that recent requests, or are these old requests that have happened?
Um, well, Russ has been here, I think, two years, so it's recent.
And it's that a request?
So, and mainly, he said mainly they're by the business, the restaurants, so um, you have. Uh, D Toys, that one needs to be trimmed quite a bit because otherwise it covers their sign, so you can't see their sign uh with the tree there, um. Snow removal can be an issue, um, so we just kinda um need to know. Uh, what direction we wanna take, um, we just had one cut a couple of weeks ago, um, right out front here, um, the stump was. Causing a trip hazard, so took it down, so right now it's not, there's nothing there, but it's, do we, do we replant these and, and put them back in? Or do we, or do we cement them up and have them sidewalk?
I think it's, of course, that'll probably be the low, but I think it's sad when you drive down our main street and all you see is bare spots and cement. I mean, we have two towns that are small and near us that are on highways, Glenwood, for example, they beautified their downtown and they put lots of trees and plants. Elbow Lake has, they don't have trees, but they have big planters that are always planted, and I think to just drive down and see bare sidewalks. Shows that your city doesn't, it's like, whatever, here we are, um, so I would, I don't know, I'd like to see something on our, on our streets, and I'm wondering. Too, if now we have a better idea of what type of trees to plant on sidewalks close to businesses versus when they were put in years ago. Um, because there are trees that are smaller in stature, that are flowering, that offer a lot more aesthetically. And aren't gonna get in the way of signs, and then maybe third, we check, let the businesses, you know, I get where some businesses don't wanna have them, but some do. And so to just put a blanket on, like, nope, we're not putting any trees up because we don't wanna shovel that, well. I don't know, that just doesn't sit right with me, I think we need to have our downtown, when people drive through here, and there's a lot of people that drive through here. It needs to look nice, cause I bet every one of you that have gone down a main street and a highway, you're noticing that, oh, there's nothing here, oh, there's something here. Um, yeah, so I would, I would, I'm voicing that we put something in there, trees, and find the right kind of trees that'll fit. In an area on a highway and, you know, a downtown, uh, try to put something that's gonna get really huge canopy, but a taller something.
You know, Kim, I, I totally agree with what your mindset is, uh, I think it really says a lot about your community, and it, it uh. To me, trees on a main street is more welcoming, and I, I just think, yeah, I know it's a commitment. It's a commitment to keep and maintain the trees, to make sure they're pruned, and, and, and uh, you know, as a former business owner, I had a tree that blocked my. Taco John's sign, and I, I fought with Jay, and he'll remember this, I fought with Jay for probably two, three years before I finally got that tree taken down. Cause I, I mean, literally people coming from the north couldn't see my sign, and, so you know, we have to be respectful of those situations too. And I think we have, you know, those, those are lessons learned, so I think your point is well made, Kim.
Just like when we talked about boulevard trees and how close they were planted, it's like, well, let's learn from that and go forward, we're not gonna plant them that close.
Yep.
Or now we're gonna offer, potentially, people can put trees in their yard versus a boulevard, and then it's taken care of by that person. And those people that want those trees will have them in their yard, just like, I, I just, I don't, I pay attention to that mainly because this has been a topic for a mo- a long time and years. What do we do with these trees on main street, and um, yeah, it, so if you drive into a town, and I know the highway dictates what we can and can't do. But we can make it look nice.
The responsibility for the pruning and maintenance is who's, ours?
Be the cities.
Okay, so as far as the selection of the trees themselves, do we ask input? Uh, well, Jay, why don't you come up to the mic and.
Well, I, I would, I would answer too, is like, okay, like Glenwood, if you look at their sidewalks, they're three times the size of ours, but, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but I, I do agree with.
They're very wider, yes, yep.
That it does beautify it, but there, what we have now is we have big mature trees down the block, not aesthetic. Trees that are, that are smaller stature that beautify, it's more like, we got, it, it got out of control. You know, if we're gonna get something that's more aesthetic, that's, you know, where you put it in there, and that, I would agree with that, and then I would also lean towards the fact that. If you talk to a business owner and you say, okay, this tree is not gonna get up to block your sign, it's only gonna get to be this size. They're gonna probably be more like, say, okay, I can handle that, but this one here, no, it's, it's out of control and, you know, I don't want it here. I mean, we have to, we have to respect the owners, but I do understand, you know, we do need something good on the street and make it look nice, and I think it does if you. You know, where they did it in Glenwood, those trees are not huge and they're, you know, I like that.
They're thinner, taller.
Yeah.
You know, there, there are some areas for tall trees, like out there, as we go out of town, there past uh Town and Country, things like that. You know, those trees are doing just fine and they're not obstructing anything. But uh, I'm not really prepared to speak to this, but we did talk about it briefly at the tree board, I didn't realize that the manager was gonna bring it up to actual discussion, cause. We've uh felt that uh we should uh be able to speak to this issue seriously because it is a long-term commitment. And uh, if you remember, uh, back in ninety two, uh, you know, you were a business owner at Taco John's, and. This was for our big remodeling of main street, and the trees were controversial at that time, I'm not gonna, and we went to every business owner, and we offered them. An idea, would you like to have a tree, if they were dead set against it, we didn't put one there, and so every property owner, including you. Agreed to a tree initially, and then we realized later it was in the wrong spot, see, so we learned and we took that out.
Yep.
Um, now the businesses have completely changed since ninety two, very few of the same, the Morris co-ops there, you know, the elevators there, the railroads there, but. You know, a lot of them have changed, and so the ideas have changed, but I do wanna say that for the first twenty years, that we had those trees downtown. When that one died, we replaced it, there was never a question about it, we replaced, the only one we didn't replace was at the Morris co-op. Because they were having trouble moving their cars around on Morris North Side there, and then at a certain point, about twenty years ago, uh, ideas kinda changed. Or maybe it's fifteen years ago, and all of a sudden, you know, they, they wouldn't replace one, and then they wouldn't replace another one, and now. You know, we have replaced some in the last ten years, but in general, these bigger trees, they, it just, uh, for whatever reason, it wasn't replaced. And I think that, um, what I brought up at the tree board is that I really believe that we need, as a community, as a city, as the council. Tree board, manager, uh, public works director, you know, come to, together on an idea, do, are we behind these things? Uh, or when one dies, we wanna take it out and concret it up, or should we put one back in, do we wanna completely rely on all the property owners to their decision? Because it is, there are all kinds of, we have five thousand people in town, lots of people like the trees, they like to stand in the shade and talk to somebody. And the property owners, for the most part, don't do any maintenance of anything out there, sometimes it inhibits in a way, there's snow removal, you know, there's that issue. Um, most of the trees that have been removed have been damaged, have been struck by vehicles. We, they're not really just dying on their own, we know how to keep them alive now, so it's like damage to vehicles are the ones on main street, uh. You know, somebody sideswipes one, something like that.
But don't you think that twenty years ago, the idea that that tree wasn't supposed to get as big as it is today? I think the idea was that those trees were aesthetic, they were only gonna get to be so big, and I think that they've outgrown, I mean. If, if, if you make the grate only that big, you were expecting it not to touch it.
Yeah, but most of those grates, you can knock them out, and you can continue to make, get them bigger, anyway, the idea was.
But, but you know what I'm saying, I think that along the lines of that idea, and I think that we, if we all get together and we have this idea. We have to be there with reality is.
Yep.
What is this tree gonna do?
Yeah, and where is it positioned?
What is it in, what is it in ten years, what is it in twenty years? So that that person can see that, say, okay, is it gonna be twenty fif- or thirty feet tall in front of my building, is it gonna be? Fifteen feet tall and like this, I mean, that, that has a lot to do with it, I think it, in my perspective of, I, you know, in the first, like you said. When they went in and we redid that project, it looked really nice, and, and when the trees were in that, in that stages where they were beautifying. I think they grew out of that stage and people got, it grew tired of them, so I think that's probably one of the deals that we need to really look at, is what are we putting in there? I'm totally in favor of.
Type of trees, and the, the longevity too, I think if you, a bigger city, they're downtown, they're replacing those trees every fifteen years.
Oh, I would know, you, they are too.
If, they're not letting them get, so is that what we need to be discussing too, is like, the replacement time is gonna be so that they don't overgrow and they don't hit, they don't, yeah.
And maybe that's something that was not laid into the long-term plan.
Well, yeah, again, we didn't, you know, it's thirty one years ago, you know, who can think of where they'd be today thirty one years ago? Did you think you'd have Taco John's, you'd be the mayor, I mean, we don't really know.
Just to set the record straight, Jay, I own, I bought my restaurant.
You didn't think we'd be sitting here?
I inherited that tree.
Be standing here still, that's for sure, you know.
Just to set the record straight, Jay, I bought my restaurant in two thousand seven, so I inherited that tree. Oh, yeah, and I had it for till two thousand thirteen, so I, I.
Oh, okay. Okay, must've been your predecessor that I talked to, alright, I'm sorry. Senior moment.
I'd probably be in the nut house or broke if I had it since ninety two.
What are you saying, man, you really owned that a long time, right?
Keep it quiet for a minute.
But anyway, I'd like to kinda ask for a little moratorium on all this, and then if we can kind of, you know, everybody think about it, and maybe this. We can be a little more prepared with the actual facts of.
Well, and I think this is just an informational. Well, and I think this was just an informational, informational item on our newsletter.
I thought she was asking for direction.
Oh, no, I, I mean, I think.
Well, she was to a point. But you know, I think what, to Jay's point, we can come up with a comprehensive plan on how we're gonna address trees in our main street. And that's really what council does. We set policy and, and, and that's really what you're talking about. So all she's asking for us is to do our job. So we can do that. Uh, from what I'm hearing from everybody sitting around here, we're all in favor of trees. So let's just, uh, visit about it and. Set some policies in place and away we'll go.
Are there any more that are gonna be taken down? None that I know of right now. I know there was fifteen.
That are sick right now or damaged.
Okay, so the ones that are there.
It's been a pretty good year for them. Um, you know, I think sixty percent of the ones we initially planted are still alive. From the initial planning, they're like thirty-one years old. And, uh, a bunch of them have been replaced once or twice. And now we have some other ones that are, like one of the guys from Hotter Tail just asking, when are you gonna replace the ones in front of that lounge? You know, so, you know, there are people that are interested, cause they help us a little bit to select the tree and whatever.
I think our first step is to adren- identify what we're gonna do with the fifteen vacancies. When's the best time, Jay, to plant those trees?
Um, for the ones on main street, I would say in the spring. Uh, cause we have trouble with, with, uh, snow removal. And if they're too small, we need to, we'd have to put some metal here. Either the fall or summer.
So we have, if we come up with a plan and address it and with a spring plant, I think we can have a, a plan to put together by then.
So I was in a community on Sunday that had the taller grates around the tree. Probably for the snow removal as, as well as they had stuck the electrical outlets on there so they could light them up. Now I'm sure that's way expensive, but they were. Probably three feet tall.
Do they have electrical to these trees?
There is electrical on there, but it hasn't functioned for.
But, but it started out, it was there.
It was supposed to be there, yeah.
We put Christmas lights on.
Yeah, I remember, cause, yeah.
But then long time, the cords weren't really dug in correctly. So if they ripped out or were pulled out by a snow, yeah, so there's. Yeah, but anyway, the grate, they were just iron grates that, um, that protect the tree for one thing. And I suppose, and then also, like I said, the outlets were on the grate so that they could do something like that.
You know, I had an idea that we could have instead, you know, a both end, you know, probably have. A grand lighting event, you know, cause we all, we all know we have the per- the parade of lights, right? If we could find a location on main street somewhere, spot that comes to mind is that spot between Ungers and Prairie Real Estate. We could have a big tree and then just have sort of a, like they do at the White House. You know, just a, like a Clark Griswold moment. Have a Clark Griswold moment here. Something like that. I think it'd be kinda fun.
For what it's, yeah, for what it's worth, I'm also in favor of trees, but I think the big thing that I'm, that I'm hearing and I'm in agreement with is we need to be strategic.
Yes.
We absolutely need to be strategic about placement and location and, and selection. And, and not to, not to. Get past any of the, of the cons, um, that, that were brought up because they are very valid, right? But, but we need to be strategic about what we decide here.
And, and your continuous maintenance of that program.
Correct.
You know, at what point is a tree removed? Is there going to be a size limit to things? So how, how far do you let it go? Before it's taken down and replaced in, into a more st- you know, to, or, or is that not part of the plan? I mean, I think that everybody needs to understand that, then that's, that becomes policy and it's just, we don't need to. Say, oh, one died. Well, we know what we're gonna do. The plan is, long-term plan is.
And so no matter who's sitting at the table here or over there, that this is what's being done.
That's exactly, yeah, absolutely. So we're not into this situation, oh, okay, we took them out and then it just, nothing's done. Well, we already know what we're gonna do.
I wanna thank council member Corales for his, uh, reporting on this issue, cause I know we. Most people, I think, are aware of the fact that we do have council representatives sitting on a lot of different boards. And, and Zach is sitting on the tree board and he's done very good, a, a very good job of bringing information back to us and keeping us informed. So I wanna give you a shout out for that. And it's, uh, it's important that we get feedback from our boards and, uh, it's a way to go. Okay, any more on that? I think we've hammered that off pretty good. We got a plan, alright? Anything else?
Um, well, I still have more stuff. So the cannabis, so we need to kinda talk about, um, a plan. So, um, Minnesota Office of Cannabis Management had a webinar on guidance for local governments. Um, so I got to watch the webinar, um, last week. Uh, they talked kind of. About the rules and, um, they're on their website to review and comment on until, uh, the end of this week. Um, but a few things we need to discuss and decide, uh, do we wanna delegate our authority to the county? Um, so there are pros and cons to both of them, like anything. So the pros would be that, uh, we wouldn't be registering any of the businesses. So all of the registering, um, all of the checking, all of, all of that goes to the county. So, um. Cons would be the county would be, would have the authority on the cap. So they, they have, um, they're working with all the cities, township to see. You know, what our thoughts are on a cap. How, how many do we, how many are we thinking if we, if we would have the authority to, to register? If we wanted to take that designation, how many do we want? Do we want one? Do we want two? Do we want five? What is our cap looking like? Um, so they're, they're talking to all of the townships, cities, um, in the, in the county. Um, cause they will have a cap too. So no matter if we decide to, to delegate or, or have our own authority here. They will still have a cap too. Um, and then their cap say we decide we want three, and the county says they're only gonna have. One, we can be their one, you know, so if someone else outside of, um, city limits and. Um, in a different town wants it, they, they can say no. So.
So their cap would be countywide versus our cap would be citywide?
Right.
Does one supersede the other? Great, like in your example, if we say we want three and the county says we want one, is the county supersede? Okay.
Uh-huh. Um, I have talked to a lot of, um, city managers around our area. A lot of them are just going to designate, have the county be the authority for it. Um, I think it's cleaner, I think it's better. Um, yes, there are some dollars associated with having the authority over a business. Um, is it, is it worth it?
Would we have to pay for a compliance check anyway?
We would have to pay the county to do the compliance checks.
It's kinda, I don't know, is it any way the, the money that you might get?
Well, it's not only the registration money for the business to register with us, but then the state also gives a percentage back. Um, like I said, is it, is it worth it?
If we turn it over to the county, does the state give the money back to the county instead of the, instead of the city?
You know, I, I'm not, I'm not so sure I'm in favor of, uh, delegating that to the county because number one, um, I'm concerned about where they're gonna put them. You know, and I think as a city, we gotta be cognizant of where these, if they're gonna put them. We don't want them in an area where there's gonna be high traffic areas.
We would still have zoning authority.
Zoning authority.
We would still have zoning authority.
Okay.
And we would have an ordinance that kind of lays out where they can go, where they can be zoned.
So we'd have some control at least?
And a lot of, um, they're saying on, on this webinar that we should treat it like an alcoholic establishment. Um, and have rules kind of in line with those, um, because it is. Kinda like that product, in a sense. So, um, I haven't done anything. Uh, with, with budgets and everything else that I've been working on. The cannabis ordinance, I haven't done anything with. It will need to get done this fall and. And be brought to you guys. Um, I did talk to Becky about, um, about kind of having some discussions on. On what their ordinance looks like, um, what, what ours would look like. Um, she's willing to, they're, she's. Um, finishing up with their fir- first draft, first draft, second draft. So she'll send me that to kinda look at, to see. Um, you can have the maps. She sent me a map the other day of kinda where schools and daycares are and, and kind of what. Um, that would look like, you know, you can go, I think, from three hundred or a thousand feet. Um, in, in those, so we can, county is gonna go maps on all of theirs when they zone it, um, and regulate it. Um, but we do have the authority for that. So we still have this, if, even if we desig- delegate our authority to them, we still have zoning. Which would, um, which would be nice.
That was kinda my big sticking point about delegating it, so you've kinda answered that for me.
I have two questions. One is, obviously, if, if the city were to take it on, we would need to do the compliance checks. With staff the way it is right now, would we be able to handle that?
We don't, because you have to have a police officer to do it. So you would have, you would do it just like you, you would do it just like you would. So like right now, we have to do tobacco and, and all that. So we, um, contract with county to do those for us.
And then second, um, if we were to say one way or the other, right, in, in the ordinance. Like, let's say that the city wants a control. What would that look like if a year down the road, two years, five years, we say. Uh, this isn't necessarily the way of doing this, right? Like what does that look like as far as amending that ordinance or whatever, right? Because that, that, that's what that would have to more than likely be, you know, giving control.
That I can find out for you.
Have, have we totally moved away from any thought of city-owned?
That is one of the questions on there. Do, you know, do we wanna look at having, uh, municipal business? Honestly, I, I don't know what that would all entail, but it's something, you know, we, we should probably talk about. And we can go down that, that, that line of thinking. If we're gonna do it, then we can, or if you're thinking, yes. We wanna do it, then we'll kinda get some more information instead of gathering a bunch of stuff. And then you're like, no, I don't wanna do it.
Well, if we do decide to go down that path, then delegating it probably doesn't make a lot of sense.
No, you wouldn't do it, then. You wouldn't delegate it.
Yeah. I don't know. I've, do we wanna be in the cannabis business? I don't know. We have a municipal that we have to manage.
Well, I, I think, I think we have to seriously kinda look at it a little bit because, you know, our, our liquor store. We use to do a lot of things for this, for this city. That money is, gets paid, you know, either pays down. So we don't elevate taxes, or we, we put it towards certain projects. So it, it really reduces our citizens of this, of the city's tax base. So is there another time that we can, how many, how many avenues does a city have to generate income? You know, the only time we generate income is through our, through there or through a tax base. So, I mean, if there was, if it was possible, wasn't like really hard to do or, or terrible. That, I think that's another way to, you know, bring income in. Maybe use that to beautify your parks or do more things for, I mean, we got plenty of buildings that need attention. Different, you know, we get, we're getting requests from the.
Infrastructure, infrastructure in general.
Yeah, we're getting requests from the library, we're getting things like this. Is this something that? You know, it's a source of revenue. I, I think we seriously have to look.
Well, the flip side of that is having lived through the seventies myself, you know, we all seen that there's a, uh, a legislative sch- shift. And, you know, cannabis, marijuana got it, you know, was illegal. So now I'm thinking, well, we go out and invest a lot of money. Get all set up and then we get a shift politically and it gets a lot again. Now we're sitting there with a cannabis building. We don't know what to do with. So, I mean, that's the devil's advocate kinda side of things, but. It's not as, I'm not real sold on it myself, but.
Is there, I suppose there's nobody in the state of Minnesota that is actively selling it yet?
The Indian reservations are.
Municipalities are not.
Nobody can until next year. Nobody, so they, they started taking applications for pre-applications. So certain. Groups of people could apply right away. They're not taking any general applications until next year.
Are the, are the. People that are selling it now, are they regulated by the state?
The only the, only the, uh, reservations are.
Okay, but they're.
So they are their own entity. They're not, they're not part of the state.
There, there, there would be no information from them to say how much money they're getting back from the state?
Minnesota there wouldn't be, but other states possibly who have. But I don't even know if they have municipality ones. If they're all privately owned. I mean, there's been other states selling for years.
Depend on how much their state is taxing and what.
Right.
Yeah.
So it'd be hard to say, oh, if we go into business, here's how much you'd be making.
Yeah, that was kind of, you know, just to, to looking at that.
But it sounds like you'd be open to maybe information about it.
A lot of information.
I know, I mean, I know. That's why I'm like, if, if we want to, it, it's, it's gonna take some time to grab some stuff. But if it's something that we, we really are thinking we wanna do, um.
I think it's been a thought, but it's gone both ways. Yay, no, yay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But not knowing a lot, like, okay, if we make two dollars.
Well, and we're gonna be competing with the county too then, right? If they have, if they're, not the county necessarily, but private business sector. If they say they allow three other ones.
Well, we, we can.
Right now, we have a municipal.
Well, we can, if we do the municipal, we only allow one within our city limits.
It doesn't matter. We don't count.
It'd be a one and one at that point.
We don't count for the number.
So you don't have, you don't have what you have with, uh, with.
No, it started that way, but they recently changed it.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought.
Don't count as one.
Ah.
So you can as a municipality have one, but somebody else can have one.
Okay, so, so, but the county can say, they might come and say, I only want two in the county. Ones in Morrison, one is over here.
I, you know, I still don't know if we would count. I don't think so. From the webinar, I don't think a municipal would count at all. I don't think so.
One more would be in, with the city limits, whether it be the municipality chooses to have a license or not. Up to ten thousand population or something, you can have one.
Yeah, twelve thousand.
So we could have potentially a couple of right outside the city limits, anywhere. And they would see right now, we have kind of a controlled market with our municipal liquor store. We don't have any other off sale. Competing with us. Where in this situation, we will potentially have competition.
That does change it. Because I was thinking the previous, what we were talking about.
To me, it don't make a lot of sense, but.
And you have to decide how much you wanna invest, because currently, unless they change it, our liquor store is not ready to sell it. Because you have to have a separate room, completely separate from the alcohol and beer sales. So we'd also have to put investment dollars into adding on to the liquor store.
Yeah.
Whole different building and then that's additional staff. I mean, there's lots of ways.
Right. And then it's always come up and nobody's had the answer. And I know other states have done it, so there has to be some way, but banking. Will the bank take the money?
Yeah, that's been, cause it's, it's been.
That's one of my biggest concerns on it, in honesty.
Yeah.
Been questions.
We're gonna start paying cash for everything. We'll get trouble.
So.
Yeah, the, 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 the ability to only be the only one in town is what makes it appealing to me. But possibly not being that way, I'm not so.
And we're competing, we're, we're competing against a private business owner and that's gonna cause some problems too. Hard feelings.
Alright, I rescind my interest in that.
Yeah.
That upon new information, if we were, if it was, if it was, if it goes along the models of what we do now, yes, I'd be a lot more interested. Cause you're, you're controlling your market, but no, I would not be interested in that.
So even if we decide, um, to delegate our authority, uh, the county wants to know, what are we thinking for the cap? Um, do you wanna?
Number, number.
How many businesses, how many licenses would you wanna give out in the city? You would just want.
City?
Yeah, so.
One in the city.
I, I agree with you, one.
One in the city.
One.
So you don't wanna give out one. Okay.
My initial gut thought was two, just so you don't have a mon- monopoly, but at the same point, I understand the logic of one.
I think there will be a lot of regulations. And I think, I think having, I think having more would. I think there will be a lot of regulations and I think, I think having, I think having more would, you know, I would say two, three.
Competition, you're thinking? It is good?
Well.
I don't know.
Does that, that, I mean, that, does that upper cost then? Or do we, do we, we charge each of those businesses permits in order to do it within the city that cover the cost?
There's a cap. I think it's, I think it was like five hundred for the initial and then you can charge a thousand for a renewal license. But most of that will probably go to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how much is, how, how many times do they have the tenant?
If we are the, are the authority, then um that, the dollars we get to get them registered will go to. Make sure they're in compliance.
Well, right, that's what I'm saying. So we're not, you're not really gaining anything in that.
The only thing you are gaining is some dollars and I don't remember the percent and I can, I can get that for you. Um.
And does that mean then that some other city in Stevens County can have one, right? So just one in Morris and.
It depends on what the county caps it at.
Yeah, if the county says, so no matter what, if we say two, there ha, there will be two in Morris, if.
Well, there could be. If two people ask for registration, there could be. Maybe only one person wants to have one. Um.
How many entrepreneurs are there out there, huh?
There's, and that's all the unknowns to it.
And, you know, and say, you know, if we delegate our authority to the county. Maybe there's someone somewhere else in the county that wants to have a business. Well, that takes away whatever their, whatever the cap is, that, then it, you know, might not be in, in our city. It might be somewhere else.
Right.
Um.
Boy, there's still so much unknown. Let's find out how much we would give back.
Okay.
Let's start with that money.
So I have that we'd want a cap of one for now. And um.
Depending upon what kind of.
Yeah. Um, look at what percentage of funds we'd get back from the state. And then if we decided to keep our, our authority right now, what would it look like? If we wanted to pass it back to the county and how that would work.
And vice versa.
Okay. Okay. Um, sounds good. So um, just some kind of information. So I met with a local group of administrators um last week. Um, an idea was presented um to see if councils would be willing to get together next year. Um, one of the gentlemen from Appleton, he used to work with um, uh, an attorney that. Came into his council um once a year to just kind of go over what their role is, how things work. Um, gives everyone kind of um, just a, a place to hear kinda, you know. Instead of having someone having to go to the league conference, it's kind of where you go to our area. Um, and then it gives you contacts with other council members in our area. Um, so.
Networking.
Yeah. So I told him I thought you guys would like that and that we would probably be on board. But I, um, he'll get some more information at one of our next few meetings or so. Once he figures out what, you know, kinda what it would cost us. We do have training dollars for councils, so um some of that could go for that. But in, you know, as we look at um training, you know, that the league conference is really good. And it helps get you to know people too and hear information. And if we could just maybe sometimes bring it to our region, cause sometimes it doesn't always work. So he was thinking a Saturday morning. Um, but once we, like I said, once we get more information, we'll maybe.
I kinda like the idea of just regionals, more local than go, I mean, like you said, then it's same size, smaller rule.
Yeah.
So it, it reminds me a lot of the newly elected officials that the league puts on, and that is very regional as well. And there will be one of those here this next year as well.
They do it just in the region?
Yeah, so like when I was appointed, I went to the, Mayor Wallace and I went to, yeah, we went to, it was over in Alec at the Arrowood.
Arrowood. That was good.
Yeah.
But.
I liked that stuff.
I'm for it.
Perfect. Wonderful. Um, so as we, as we kinda put that together, I'll let him know that we are on board. Um, and then just to note, uh, the library is closed August thirtieth for three weeks. Um, hopefully sooner, but three weeks um is what they are putting out um due to getting new carpeting. So they'll still do um kinda what they did in COVID, where they'll have, if you wanna book, they'll get it ready for you and give it out. Um, but they won't be open to the public.
Okay, any other questions or off the city managers report before we move on? Hearing none, we have, uh, we'll move down to other business. Um, I just have a couple of things. Take one, pass it on. I just, I ran across our goals and I, I know we sat down and did a goal workshop. Members of the council, and I just thought it'd be good for us to kinda do a little checkup on ourselves, just to uh. Just review where we sit on all of our goals and maybe just uh reevaluate uh in our goals. I know we've had a couple of people running for reelection and it might be rather timely for uh those folks. But for all of us, you know, maybe we set a, a time right around uh first of the year. It's always kind of a, a good time to come up with a, you know, fresh set of goals, maybe reevaluate, check off. You know, one thing about goals, you can check a few things off and add a few. So I just thought it'd be helpful if we uh just reevaluate where we're at with those. And you want this, Becky?
I grabbed one.
You got, okay.
Yep.
Um, then I guess the other thing I have with regards to other business, anybody else have other business things first? Otherwise, I have information.
I just wanted, just to revisit the baseball building thing, is just to maybe we get information on where they're proposing it sitting. And the utilities underneath it. I think we're a, a little fuzzy about, about that. Uh, and what is there? So I, it, when, when we talk again, it'd be nice to have, say, okay, what is under there?
Utility map of some sort.
Can it be left there? Can it not be left there? Cause I, I really, once that, they, they explained that that would be part of the wall, that sounded pretty cool to me. And so it's starting to make a little more sense. So I'm like, okay, what is really there? I mean, even though we have an opinion, you know, we don't, they don't really want it there, cause we have some utilities close to it. Well, let's, let's find out exactly where everything is.
Well, and I think that's gonna probably be the deal stopper, like we talked about before, Brian. If, if there is utilities there and it has to be moved. Then that's gonna incur some expense and costs.
We need that information to, to, to X out certain spots.
Yep.
Here, no, here, no, 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 no. Can we get it somewhere or can't we? I mean, we just need to have that information.
Mm-huh.
So I just wanted to make sure that we're all on that page, so.
Alright, anybody else have any other business? Otherwise, I have a couple of informational items. Oh, we did board updates. We kinda skipped right through that. Any other board updates besides, I know Zach reported on the tree board? Um, I guess I have a couple chamber related things that I could share with you, that's kinda fits.
I would do the, on the RC board, I haven't been talking about it lately, but soon we, they'll be, they'll have twenty-four seven access to the.
Oh.
To the RC, so I'm not exactly sure what date that's rolling out, uh, but it is close.
So you're just gonna have like a key card to get into the whole thing or just certain parts of it? That's unknown.
Not the swimming area and certain areas, but most of it, yes.
Oh, that's, that'll be good.
Yeah.
Uh, the chamber uh welcome picnic is next Wednesday, September fourth. And I talked to Sarah Lindquist this afternoon and I know Kim helped last year and I think Becky, you helped serve. Would, she needs five. Would you be willing, she's looking for people from five thirty to seven. That's Wednesday the fourth. Uh, you'd be able to, you'd be in that, Kim, are you in?
I can help.
If you two wanna come, you're more than welcome.
I'll be in Canada.
Oh, okay, well.
I'll look at my schedule and I'll update accordingly.
So I got three and a, maybe, okay, that's good. Um, it sounds like Russ is doing the tables over there. She's been communicating with him.
Okay.
But I think they're expecting approximately six hundred and fifty students this year, because they're rolling it in with homecoming week. So they're, last year we served three hundred and fifty, so they're expecting double this year. So it's gonna, we're gonna be busy. Um, let's see, just to, for what it's worth, last Wednesday, I was asked to speak at the student athletic. Uh, event out at the college, out at the um auditorium. And I graciously accepted and it was real, it's really kinda fun, you know, that's a, they do, it's a rouser event. And um there were three hundred and fifty student athletes in the gym. So Mayor Wallace got to stand up and uh speak before them. It was kinda fun. I put a challenge out to the football players and. You know, we, back in the seventy-five through eighty-one era, Cougar football dominated. And I just kinda had all the football players stand up and I just kinda put it on them. Said, okay, let's see if we can, you know, bring this thing back to the glory days. So it was fun. I had a lot of good time with it and a lot of excitement and enthusiasm and with Cougar athletes, there's, you know, Cougar athletics this year. So it's kinda hard to believe that that's already upon us, but it is. Uh, that's it. Lazy days and crazy nights. You know, we talked about that earlier. That makeup night from the storm is September seventeenth. That's a Wednesday, I believe. It's gonna go from five to seven. Cause we weren't able to have the entertainment portion of Crazy Days. So that's the makeup day, so to speak. That'll be on the seventeenth at Eastside Park. I think that's it. Anybody else have anything to come before the council? If not, meeting.